Hello.
Hello.
Interesting that about that parcel on Savannah Road. Hello, Janelle.
There we go.
Hello, Tim.
Good evening, Janelle.
Evening.
Hi, Ted.
How you doing?
Fine, thanks.
Beautiful, beautiful day. Wow.
Remarkable. Once again, I have a dog sitting on my.
The dog wasn't sitting there last night.
No, he actually was. He got very anxious during the meeting and today when I was getting set up for this one, he came over and there's something about this that is eliciting a some kind of anxiety in this dog for some reason.
All these people talking to him.
Yeah.
Talking to you and can't figure out who's talking.
Exactly right, Ted.
You get it. Dog's thinking everybody's, you know, hallucinating or something.
Yeah.
Hello, Bonnie.
Hello, how everybody?
Hello, Bonnie.
Thanks.
I think we're all wishing that we could just continue this weather indefinitely.
Oh, my God. Be careful what you wish for.
This is called San Diego, I think.
Yeah. I understand tomorrow's going to be every bit as warm as today.
Yeah. Supposedly rain by late afternoon. Hey, Rob.
Hey, there, Rob.
Bonnie. Yeah, Marie.
Amber, yeah.
She's not talking yet.
I'm sorry. I keep muting myself. So that you don't get to hear my dogs.
So, Janelle, do you have a puppy or a kitty that's with you?
I do not.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I'm allergic.
Allergic to cats, too?
Yes.
I would think especially. So I've heard.
A hypoallergenic dog.
Yeah, I have two. I might drop one off. Where are you exactly, Janelle?
That's okay.
Here.
Yeah.
They've done a great job, though, since they opened their space down here. It's really wonderful. Well, we need. We need Andrew yet.
I'll text him.
Oh, he'll be along momentarily, probably.
Okay, I won't.
Well, whatever. It's just, he's got a minute.
And Glenn's not here.
All right, so we have to. I think we agreed last night that Glenn usually slides in at the last minute.
Yes. Saving us billable time.
Okay, Glenn, Andrew. Just sent Andrew a text.
I have music playing in the background, very low. Can you all hear that?
I can't, but I can hear less and less these days.
Okay.
Anyone can hear it, it's probably Janelle because she's she's got her Princess Leia look on.
Yeah. That's exactly. I love it. Can you hear it, Janelle?
Got to comment on that. You're muted. You can't. We can't hear you.
Yeah, not at the moment.
Yeah.
I can't. Why didn't Andrew just stay on? I mean, we were basically from last night, you know, it could have been right around the corner.
You could bring your pillow and we could just have a slumber party, you know?
Yeah. Bring my toothbrush.
I would hope.
What do you think, Bogey? Be okay.
Okay, Andrew isn't. But Glenn's not here either, so.
I texted him. So I'm gonna stay on mute unless I'm talking because I have my dogs constantly whine. Because it's what they do, and I'm sure you don't want to hear that all night. I know I don't, but I don't have a choice.
Let's hope we're not here all night.
Good point. I've got two dachshunds.
Oh.
Yeah. And one, we think, might have a little beagle in them. And he's taught the other one how to whine and how to bark. Excellent. Yeah. Excellent. A lovely thing.
Are they the short hair variety or the long hair?
Short hair. So it looks like there's little eyelashes all over whatever they're sitting on.
Right.
All right. I guess it's possible that Andrew forgot.
So Glenn had something at 5:30, so he said he'll be on shortly.
Okay. I'll try calling Andrew.
So I'm looking at the I'm looking at the draft language. I got on their computer right here on my and I was struck by the fact that, as in all of our ordinances, there's a separability clause, given the topic that was before the Supreme Court today on the ACA. You know, this is why you you put those separability clauses into your legislation so that you explicitly avoid the kind of issues that's, you know, going on.
Did you listen to the argument today?
I did not. I was all tied up in stuff for this move to New Hampshire today. So, no, I didn't.
I did hear part of it. It was interesting. I could see it on video, but of course they don't allow that.
Yeah.
What was your take, Rob?
That these are very effective advocates and that the justices are very well and listened to enough arguments to compare one against another. But I did see that in the breaking news, that the papers took the view that Kavanaugh was going to side with Robertson upholding it.
All right, Andrew's not answering his cell phone, so.
Once they get appointed to it, once they get confirmed onto the court, they tend to my experience is, I don't find that they tend to be overly partisan. I think that they do take the nonpartisan thing pretty seriously, but I could be wrong. I think you're right. I think most do. I mean, I argued separability is it's one of those kind of hail Mary arguments you put at the end of a brief if you're trying to get something struck down. I mean, it's it's pretty hard absent some sign of legislative intent to say that that Congress or the state legislature, whatever, city council. That they that it was intended that the entire law be struck down if one piece is missing. I mean, typically, you you actually put that in and say, you know, if this building block of of the statutory structure is crumbles, then then we intend that the whole thing come down. So it's kind of hard. It's hard to do so that to say that's implied. And, you know, there's all the rules about legislation is intended to, you know, courts are supposed to uphold it if they can, because there's legislation is 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 given a presumption. It's, you know, there's a lot of statutory construction reasons why you you don't willy-nilly just knock an entire statutory structure down if one piece of it is.
I'm sure, Bonnie, you are taking into account the fact that when they upheld it before, Roberts' opinion did that on the basis of a feature of the statute that the Congress is now getting rid of. So they've got to another base.
And that's why the Fifth Circuit could could, you know, wiggle in the way it did. But I mean, I didn't listen to the argument, but I saw the same breaking news kind of stuff that you did, Rob, and it sounded like Roberts was like, yeah, no, I'm not gonna strike this down. We'll see. We'll see. Good argument, and they were prepared. That's always better to have a good brief and a good argument than a lousy brief and a lousy argument.
Yeah. Right, Henry. Andrew is not responding to either email or to us either a text message or a call. And do we have any information from Glenn?
He said, thought he said he'd be right on, be on ASAP.
Okay.
So.
Well, it's getting on to 6:10. Shall we go ahead and get started and let him join us?
Yeah, I think, I mean, because the the start is really the the presentation.
Right, exactly. So we'll go ahead and get started. And and we are here for a public hearing to consider the an ordinance to amend Chapter 9 of Chapter 197, zoning of municipal code of the City of Lewis, Delaware, Section 197-74 relating to fill in the floodplain. This has, this was a topic that's been discussed, and we have had some correspondence on it. And, Janelle, do you want to take this on and talk with us about it?
Sure, I can give a brief overview. So this originally came to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their consideration. There was a floodplain fill subcommittee that was created, and Melanie is joining us today to give us some additional information. The commission held a public hearing on August 19th of this year, took in a number of comments, and that there in September 16th meeting, they did make a recommendation of approval to this body or that app or the revisions to the code. The revisions to the code, again, regarding film of floodplain. The proposal is a new section, a letter D under five, number five, fill, which states that fill within a special flood hazard area shall result in no net loss of natural floodplain storage or increase in water surface elevations during the base flood. A report documenting this condition shall be submitted as part of the major preliminary subdivision process. When fill is to be used on site, the report shall be created by a qualified professional. The report shall include existing proposed floodplain storage capacity and document the completed existing floodplain storage capacity at or adjacent to the development site. So and some questions that did come up, there were questions about qualified professional, and we've had that in a couple of different items. We did not specifically define qualified professional because there could be a wetland professional, somebody who deal, you know, certain engineers that are appropriate. And that determination, again, this would apply to major subdivisions that ability to ask for additional information if they had concerns about qualifications and ask for additional information or a different or, you know, differing opinion if there was concern about that report. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'm not sure if Melanie wants to say anything regarding that, because she did a lot of work on this.
Melanie is muted, so if she could unmute herself. Thanks, Melanie. Please, the floor is yours.
Well, we were concerned about floodplain fill being something that's fairly easy to achieve through the FEMA process, which is rather surprising, but you can evidently get floodplain fill if it's less than a foot through a letter of that extent. So we were concerned that that this is a something that that would be allowed in in the city if a FEMA permit was granted. And since those are fairly routine, we wanted to make sure that if you were filling the floodplain, that you would not have a negative impact upon any of the neighbors. Or that if you fill someplace else, you've got to remove material so that there's a balance between that cut and fill in the floodplain. So we're hoping that this language will achieve that goal. And therefore, there would be no more impact from development within Lewis on existing neighbors.
May I ask Melanie a question?
Or please.
This is Rob. What is your view on the comment?
Here, I'm going to call you back later.
Rob, Tim, would you mute yourself, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
What is your view of on the the comment of Dr. Swallow that the it would be better if the ordinance took sea level rise projections into account in?
I would, I would certainly concur with that comment, but we seem to have moved a little more quickly than in putting this language together, and we're concerned that that we at least achieve this at this point in time. We can certainly amend it in the future, working with the sea level rise, whatever type of language that comes up with, so we can make further adjustments to this floodplain language at that time. But we we felt it was very important for us to move forward on this.
If we adopt this to keep it on the front burner for this, waiting for the sea level rise community to weigh in?
I would rather see this move forward completely rather than letting it play catch up.
In other words, adopt it as it is now?
Yes.
With?
With the ability to adjust it in the future. Yes.
Thank you. You.
Are there any other questions for the table before we ask for public comment?
I had a couple. Melanie, in in the draft language, in the second sentence, it says, "A report documenting this conviction shall be submitted as part of the major preliminary subdivision process." Did your subcommittee give any thought to specifying when in the process this report would be submitted, I mean, at preliminary consent, for example, or subsequently?
Yes, we wanted to put this language in the requirements so that right from the get-go, everyone would be aware that this is necessary.
So would to make that express, should we say as part of the major, as as part of and prior to seeking preliminary consent? Something like that to make it clear at what stage this is intended to be submitted?
Well, we have, I believe we put it in the checklist for preliminary submission.
It seems to me that this kind of the way this language does, it says, if I would infer that it would it required prior to the preliminary.
Right. I think that's my understanding as well. I guess what I'm talking, what I'm thinking is, should we make this express instead of implicit, particularly given what I think is is where counsel has been going about trying to have more and better information earlier in the major subdivision process. My second question was in the language in the last sentence where it says "As the report shall include the existing and proposed floodplain storage capacity and document that the completed development will meet or exceed the existing floodplain storage capacity at or adjacent to the development site." Could you talk a little bit about what that means, the adjacent to the development site, please? I wasn't quite sure what that what that intended.
I think we wanted to build in a little flexibility. If if there's a floodplain fill that's necessary for something and the developer has access to an adjoining site or a site within perhaps even the where same could be achieved, then that would be allowable. That was the the idea.
Okay. I mean, I that's that's that that sounds appropriate. I guess my final question is maybe for Glenn, which is, at the beginning, Glenn, you may not have been on yet, but Melanie was talking about how site plan amendments are fairly routine at least to at a certain level by FEMA and by level, I mean, level of the amount of fill you can put in. Did he have the authority to to make this to make that more stringent through this kind of ordinance? Are we on firm ground there?
I think it does. We've looked at that some, and I do think we have the ability to to make it more stringent, as you say.
Okay, great. Those are my questions. Thank you very much.
Andrew, glad you joined us. Thank you.
Yeah, apologize.
No problem. And Glenn?
Thanks.
Tim, I think you had some questions you wanted to ask. You want to go ahead? Tim? You're frozen. Okay.
So for clarification, for Councilwoman Ossler's question, would it be good that it would be submitted as part of the major subdivision as part of the preliminary consent submittal process?
Just adding, submittal process?
Yeah, that's what I'd recommend.
Okay, because I think that that cleans up everybody's concerns.
Well, I think Bonnie had a on on adjacent to the development site. Melanie's thinking was that that might be something, as I heard here, that the developer could offer as his as an adjoining site he owned. But it does seem to me to offer some weasel room. And I'm a little bit uncomfortable with it as it stands.
Glenn, how does this fit with the TD? that a developer could use?
Yeah, I'm not sure if they, if there's a real connection there. I understand what your thought process, but I don't know, Mayor. I really haven't given that a whole lot of consideration.
We've seen that done several times. And I think we ought to make sure that we're on sound footing here. If somebody came in and they had, you know, a TDRL that they wanted to use. I mean, this question that Bonnie and Robert have been talking about kind of looks like that might be a TDRL if it were adjacent property.
Janelle, that's not the, that's not the intent, right?
No. My understanding was the intent that it doesn't negatively impact the neighboring property.
Right.
Now, have you seen ways that you can incentivize, because the wording around, have you seen ways that you can incentivize developers to actually exceed that capacity rather than meet?
Typically, most will just come in and meet their criteria. I have not come across ways that have worked to get to get others to exceed.
I have a question I'd like to ask. I apologize, I lost connectivity for a minute. I jumped, that's what happened to my connect, why I disappeared. Any explain to me how a natural floodplain storage is determined?
So typically FEMA will look at that and engineers will look at that to determine what is the floodplain and what is, I mean, again, the natural floodplain is just going to be, you know, you don't have a stormwater management pond, you don't have any other thing on there. The rest of it would be, excuse me, you know, how the property exists. And I believe we have an engineer that could help answer that question.
Yeah, so I just brought up Brent Jet. So Brent, if you can unmute yourself, perhaps you can answer that question.
So, there are two ways of looking at it. The, I think the most popular way that Lewis has seen has been the bathtub model, where you put definitive boundaries on it and there's a finite amount of water. And it's more or less like a tube of toothpaste. So when you squeeze it in one area, it gets moved to another area. The other way of looking at it is how FEMA attempts to look at it with their floodplain maps as a much broader, I'll call it Olympic swimming pool sized model, where you're not necessarily squeezing and moving quite as much, but they try to look at it as a holistic coastline and internet connectivity between bodies of water and networks and floodplanes.
So is there, thank you, Brett. You have to understand, I don't approach this as an engineer, so I, I'm not real familiar with, in fact, I have no familiarity with the engineering principles that we're speaking about. But what in the engineering world, you usually deal with things that are measured, correct?
Correct.
And how can, how do you do, what is the unit of measure for a natural floodplain? And how, and especially the storage of, I assume storage means the retention of water on that land? Is that correct?
Yeah. So FEMA has some models that if you call and request, or fill out a form and request on a, to run an additional model with different parameters than what they ran for the FEMA floodmaps. There's also a HECS program that you can run. You can alter the landscape and run it that way.
And what was that term, that second term that you used?
HECS, it's, I'm not sure what it stands for, but it's H E C dash R A S.
Okay.
Basically an army corps.
That, the fact that there is, that FEMA program that you mentioned, is that something that is available to a municipality or available to a developer?
It's available, it's available on a case-by-case basis to determine how the floodplain will be impacted by the development.
Would you think, given the fact that we are living in a coastal plain, do you think that that might be something that we want to build in as a requirement of an ordinance? That
It could be.
There be actually a
Full disclosure, I've never utilized it before. Most of the time, it's used for riverine, but they do do it, utilize it for coastal areas. I haven't personally run across it in my professional career yet, but I think we have a project in Caroline where we may be going down that path. I just know the process.
Okay, but the FEMA would be applicable to a coastal plain. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. They create the models, or create the maps via this model.
Okay. What do you, what is your reaction to my suggestion? See, what concerns me here is that, one of my concerns is that we have not pinned down the type of specialist who will determine the ability to take fill, right, or what its natural floodplain storage is. We've not determined that in the ordinance. We're expecting that someone in, who's a professional, someone who's a professional will make that determination. But we've not been specific about, and I don't even know what kind of background a person would need to do this, but I'm trying to look at it in a way for us to protect ourselves, our city and our, you know, our residents.
And I understand, I kind of liken it to what soil conservation has done for stormwater requirements is, there are probably 15 to 25 different hydrologic programs that you can run for stormwater, but they have a standard that they accept. You pushed up the FEMA model that is a product that's coming from them that's utilized to determine, then it everybody's on the same playing field.
Right. And especially if FEMA is the governing body that determines, and as with Janelle described earlier, was that, or maybe it was Melanie, about the one foot, you can fill up to one foot through a FEMA review or some kind of FEMA pardon?
Amendment.
Amendment.
Right.
Letter of map amendment.
Okay. Fill, correct?
I believe it might be a little bit more than that, but typically though, I'm not going to say rubber stamp it, but they'll allow you up to a foot.
Okay.
Because the FEMA maps are at even foot increments. So if their model comes up at 6.01, the FEMA map shows seven. Because they're giving you that .99.
Got it. How about the state of Delaware? Does the state of Delaware offer any kind of tool that we could use?
I would defer to Danielle on that, the Dr. Swallow. I'm not sure that they have a product at this point in time to address that. They may, I just don't know if they have one.
Right.
If I could make a suggestion, when you fill the floodplain, you can quantify that by measuring the depth and width and height of the area that you're filling. Okay, so you can come up with a square foot or square yard or whatever it might be. And then to show that you're not having any impact, you would show an equal amount of removal of fill.
Right, removing the fill, would that take it back to its natural state?
Balance with the fill. So, I'm not sure that the HECS program is appropriate in this instance. I think it's a much simpler calculation than than going through all the computer gyrations.
And what is that formula or what are you suggesting there, please?
I'm sorry?
I think you suggested that it was a simple, there was a simple program. Is that what you, how you described it?
No, I think it's a simpler calculation than going through the computer program. Think of my suggestion.
I think it's extremely difficult to do in construction nowadays just based on the requirement to build a finished floor up. So a lot of the home sites are going to be built up anyway. It might be doable on a case-by-case basis.
I'm talking about the calculation, not the
Oh, the calculation is very simple.
Right. Okay.
So somebody, if you could mute whatever's going on around you, that would be helpful. Thank you. Wasn't trying to cut Melanie off. She silenced herself.
The cut fill calc is very simple to do and should be done, you know, for every subdivision anyway. Tell this sometimes it won't.
What does that mean, please?
There are drainage areas that the water wants to naturally go to. If you were to fill in front of that, but dig out from another area, then you could potentially cut off the drainage area, but you could have no net fill on a property.
Makes sense.
By, no net fill because you're moving it from one place to another place on the same parcel?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. You know, one of the, one of the other things that I, first of all, I appreciate very much the effort that Planning Commission has made, the subcommittee made on this issue. But I am concerned that, one of my concerns is that it's, of course, applicable five lots or more greater. And we have many community, well, we don't have many, but we do have what I consider pocket communities that is smaller than five, fewer than five lots in what would be considered a minor subdivision. And yet, we would have, we could have floodplains in those smaller subdivisions. Likeable. Is, are we overlooking something there? Or was that, what was the intention there?
I believe the intention was to focus on, because we noticed the concern about large fill being, going into major developments. Even if you have a minor subdivision, you still have to comply with the FEMA regulations. And there are areas and will prohibit fill to be added into certain areas. I believe it's the VE zone, so you won't actually be able to fill in those areas. And then we recognized that if there's, again, there's, minor subdivisions still come before the Planning Commission in council. So if they believe that there is a concern, they could make that a condition. But the intent was to, the concern was being seen on larger developments where fill was being used more. And that's why
But if it's not a requirement of a developer for a small subdivision, does that mean that we are turning a blind eye to that condition existing?
I don't believe so, because if you, if you have concerns about that, you can make that a condition
But how would I know?
As part of the minor subdivision.
But how would Tim, as a councilperson who doesn't know much determine that, as someone who's reviewing at some level a minor subdivision plan, site plan?
So I believe the staff and the engineers would take a look and determine if we recognize that there could be a concern with floodplain and fill in the floodplain based on their grading plan. And we can bring that to their attention and your attention.
And that grading plan is actually a part of the preliminary review for a minor?
To show grading on a minor subdivision.
Yeah, typically.
So we can see grading. And they have to show the floodplain on subdivision plans, all subdivision plans. They have to show the floodplain.
Right. And they, on a plan, do they? Okay, so you are on a minor, or regardless of minor or major, they would still in their preliminary planning to show not only floodplain, but also their intent to use fill or move, move soil on this, within the site to create their proper elevation?
Yes. And typically, on like a one or two lot subdivision, that typically does not happen, that there would be fill for that site, because usually at that, that point, you're subdividing an existing is already the same for that property. So that you see that a lot less in smaller, in the minor subdivisions, and you see it much more so in the major subdivisions.
We need to keep in mind that this is scheduled as a public hearing. This is an interesting discussion we're having, but we, we've already lost five members of the public. We need to open this up to a public input. So, I think we still have four members of the public with us. I don't, two of them have submitted a letter this morning, Janice Pinto and John Keiker. I don't know if you would like to make further comment to, in reference to your letter that you submitted this morning or not. And the other two people who are still with us are members of the Planning Commission. John or Janice, do you wish to make further comments?
Did they ask for their letter to be read aloud into the?
I don't think it needs to be read aloud.
So long as all members of council got it.
Everyone got it this morning.
They just, it was, I thought they requested it, that's all.
We only had two emails, one from Daniel Swallow and one from John and Janice this morning that I'm aware of. Janelle, do you have any other correspondence?
No, there's no additional correspondence. And they asked it to be sent to the Planning Commission. That was their request.
Right. Rob's muted, he's trying to say something.
Oh. Rob, you're still muted.
Got it. I didn't see those materials. I haven't read them. I linked to the link on the agenda. And all I, the only comment I saw was that of Dr. Swallow. Where would I find these others?
There's only one other letter. It's, it's jointly signed by Janice and, and it was sent to you separately this morning. All, all members of council sent, sent this letter, this short
Is it usual that we post them on the, on the website?
We will, it's certainly part of the official record.
Okay.
And it will be posted. Obviously, no one is in the office right now. I don't know whether Janelle or anyone tried to post it today or not. Janelle, do you?
I actually had not seen those letters. I don't think I've seen.
Well, there's only one letter. You've had, you have the one from Danielle. Janice and John wrote a letter together. There's not two left.
I did not see that.
Okay.
I, speaking of correspondence, I did not see the one that Danielle Swallow submitted. But maybe I
Was attached. The last thing, it was attached to the agenda.
Huh. Okay, I overlooked that then. I thought I
It's only two sentences.
Okay. All right.
I mean, if, Rob, since you didn't see it, it will certainly be posted before it comes back.
You came across it at nine o'clock this morning.
Yeah, that's enough. I just, I would have liked to have seen it.
Okay.
Well, I didn't get it, but, but that's a different story.
Okay. Bob and, and Tom Panetta are on here as well as John and Janice. Do any of you have a comment that you would like to make here this evening?
There, if they don't, I, oh, Tom's saying none. I, I did have a question. I apologize for being late if this was covered, but I recall speaking to Jamie Whitehouse from the county with respect to the source, when it's used in the county, this, the source of the of the fill coming in. Do, do we have ordinances or things in place to, I guess, protect for that, or is that something that we could, can do? The way he kind of positioned is it's done through the Army Corps and FEMA, so you don't really have much control over what fill is actually coming in. Is, can you speak to that, the quality of the fill or having knowledge of the source of the fill that's being used in our town?
Allow is construction debris and, you know, waste to be used as fill, other than that, and that is actually in the, in the floodplain regulations regarding fill. We have regulations as to what cannot be used as fill, but we don't say where the fill can come from.
We have no control if they're, if they're bringing contaminated soil into the town, is that correct?
Well, they wouldn't legally be allowed to do that.
Right.
But as long as it's clean soil and, and fill and it's not construction debris, guard waste, et cetera, it can be brought in and used as fill. And again, it would have to go through review from either the Army Corps or FEMA.
Because it's done by Army Corps and FEMA, we couldn't put something in our ordinance where we more stringently want to know the source of our fill? Or get, or ask for our fill to be from Sussex County or, or something like that?
I'm going to defer to Glenn.
You know, have some evidence suggesting, you know, what, for what reason you're requiring it? I mean, I suppose there'd be circumstances where you could require a particular type of fill, but, but so far on this record at least, there's nothing that's been created suggesting what it needs to be.
So following up on Andrew's question, Glenn, could we say that part of the requirement will be to disclose the source of the fill? And required that it be of the same quality as the existing soil on the site?
I don't see any immediate problem with doing that. So I think probably, yeah.
I would concur.
I think the source, you can say, you can't limit it to Sussex County because it could come from, could come from Kent County. That restriction would be too
So I think Andrew raises a very interesting point. Because certainly, I mean, I'm just thinking back to when the debris circle, street renovation was done, and the quality of, of the new soil that was brought in on the medians was, was very poor. I mean, it was full of bottles and stones and, you know, all kinds of tin cans. All kinds of stuff. So I think it's a very interesting point. And, and my, I mean, I don't, this is an area about which I know very, very little, but my understanding is that fill actually has, is graded, you know, in terms of its, its et cetera. So I, I think that is something that, that I, I think it's, I think it would be appropriate to ask Janelle to take a look at that. Both in, about whether or not we can specify the, the, the quality of the fill that's used, assuming it's even allowed to be brought in. The source, I don't know the source, I, I understand where you're going with that, Andrew, but I don't know if the source matters so much as the quality of and having some kind of control over the quality, that it not be too sandy or too clay or too or too full of stuff. Debris. I think that's a very, that's a very interesting point to bring up.
Yeah, the, the, the thing on that bond is the, sometimes potentially with fill, you could bring in plants that aren't like maybe invasive species and all of a sudden, you know.
I have another problem.
So if you'd like me, I currently, in the floodplain regulations, in the same section as Phil that we're looking at, it says fill, including but not limited to rubble, construction debris, woody debris and trash shall not be permitted in special flood hazard areas. So it's already prohibited to be come in. And in just general construction requirements, the fill has to meet requirements because I, I can can state if I'm wrong to a certain amount, to a certain degree. And if you've got certain debris in it, it will not meet that compassion, compaction requirement and do what it's supposed to for drainage or engineering or other things. So it already has to meet a standard that is set, and I think there are just some general engineering standards for, for bringing in fill for grading and, and construction.
Sounds like many of the things that we're concerned with in this conversation are already addressed, but it comes down to how, how does the RPR enforce it? You know, and are they, are they properly supervising it when, when it comes in? And so, you know, I, I, we can put other language in here, I'm not opposed to that at all, but I think it also gets down to what direction are we providing whoever we're hiring as an RPR and the contractor.
But it also sounds like some of these concerns are more global, not just floodplain issues, but I mean
Exactly, exactly, yep.
Well, Planation has been studying their subcommittees, they describe them as a puzzle, so pieces to the puzzle, and this is one of the pieces, right?
Right.
So it is a global, it does have a global quality to everything that they have been studying and what they're bringing forward to us to consider.
So maybe what we need to do is look at the subject relating to what Janelle was saying about what was allowed in terms of fill in general and address it there rather than trying to address it here. That may be a more appropriate
That's fine with me. That's why I just wanted to ask whether it was covered somewhere.
Okay, all right. Another task for Janelle and the Planning Commission.
Yeah, I just read the code, so it prohibits quite a number of things regarding fill coming in.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion here this evening? I think all of our participants, our attendees have decided not to further comment further. And we do have the two pieces of correspondence which will be incorporated here. And if there's any, if there's nothing further, I think we could entertain a motion to adjourn.
We do have a, some items in the chat, I don't know if
They're all basically saying I, that they don't have, they have no further comment, Rob.
The only, the only, Bob Hepburn said that he's supportive of the ordinance and Tom Panetta, and he makes a, a good point, is that one difference is that the county allows structural fill under structures and, and the city of Lewis does not.
They're already ahead of the county on that one. So.
Can we confirm when we'll be making a decision on this? Which mean, is it a special meeting or are we doing that at the next public?
They can have the December agenda, the December
Okay, great, fine.
So I do move to adjourn.
Thank you, Rob. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion of second, all in favor?
Hi. Hi.